We'll call the meeting to order and stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, first up, we will be looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes council minutes from November eighteenth, street committee minutes from November eighteenth, utility commission from November twentieth, licenses and permits, a cigarette license renewal from Dollar General, and an exempt gambling permit for Wyndham Elementary PTO for May first of twenty-six for a raffle, and the regular bills. So if there are no questions, comments, corrections, we'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I make a motion to, uh, for the consent agenda approved?
One second.
Motion is made by Benson, second by Sherman. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next up, department heads. Are there any department heads here that want to speak now? On up.
Good evening. I'm Jeff Dana, Telcom Department General Manager, Wyndham Dot. I just want to let the council know that we're having a how-to Wyndham TV meeting, open house at the community center tomorrow, Wednesday, December third at six P. M. Myself and the Wyndham staff will be there to basically demonstration, streaming video services, hook up a Roku or other type device, answer general questions, answer session. We also have like a Fire TV along with a Roku devices there to demonstrate those and answer any questions. We do have a lot of information on the website. We've got a few ads out there in the paper, basically outlining, uh, switching to the new TV system, step-by-step guide, et cetera. So, right now, we have ninety-eight customers on the streaming system. And we keep adding as many as we can and as fast as we can. So hopefully, we have a good turnout. I think we have room for about seventy people seating in the senior center, at the community center. So hopefully, we get a good turnout.
Do you know if there's any chance, I had gotten an email from somebody that's wondering if any of that could be recorded and posted on either the website or Channel Three if people can't make it?
Well, in a situation like that, it's really hard to get a good quality audio and recording of what's going on with what's on the screen, et cetera. Plus, we don't have any more of the cameras and hi-def cameras that we used to have. Those are no longer viable. So the only way you'd have to record would be off of a cellphone or something like that. And just to pick up the questions and answers would be a little bit difficult. A one-on-one situation, we have one person demonstrating and one person recording. It does capture the audio pretty good, and you can get some of that screen capture on there. But what we're gonna do is do like a screen capture session of actually the steps you go through, so you can actually see it, and have that on the website also.
I also had some people ask me if there's any way we could get it, some type of broadcast over Channel Three. So we, they, step-by-step, so they could, some, the older generation's not really computer savvy. So to get to the website that you guys have, it's hard for some of them. And if they could watch on Channel Three, they would, it would help them a lot.
Okay, I'll check into that.
Jeff, just FYI, did bring that up to Megan and Jordan a couple of days ago. So they were gonna work on it. So.
Yeah, if we get it in the right format, we can probably load it on there as another, uh, recurring video, like what we do at the council meetings.
Does anyone have anything else for Jeff? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other department heads that want to speak now?
Sonia Wilt, Wyndham EDA. I just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware that they're having the Castle Kingdom Design Day, December tenth at the Bark that's open to the public from five-thirty to eight o'clock. Welcome all the input.
When is that again? Sorry.
Sorry, December tenth. It's next Wednesday, and it'll run from five-thirty to eight o'clock at the Bark. Leathers, our playground by Leathers will be visiting the schools and stuff essentially all day long and, and stuff. And then this is open for the public to come in and voice their thoughts and ideas. And there'll be a couple sample parks on display there to kind of give them the big posters and stuff, to give people an idea of what it could possibly look like.
Thank you.
Any other department heads at this time? Okay. Moving on, next up, we have the 2026 city budget, the budget presentation. Steve, are you going to be delivering that for us?
I will do that, Mayor. Donna is here in case you have other questions, or she can add something if maybe you want to set a department head table so they can hear you if you had to add something, but if you would. So I'll just go through the slides while she's getting ready. So, city council, we set the preliminary budget levy at four-point-nine percent increase back in September. The council then had several budget workshops, heard from all the department heads about their operations budgets, as well as capital requests. So this budget presentation is broken down into several parts of the budget. The first one's gonna be enterprise funds, and enterprise funds are business activities that are self-supporting. So like telecom, water, wastewater, electric and liquor. I'll start off with telecom. Because we're in the middle of, or just starting, however you want to look at it, the conversion to streaming, coming up with a new budget for that department. What's on the screen is a little different than the one you saw initially, because the one you saw initially was based on if we'd have kept the status quo of the old cable TV system. So making conversion to streaming reduces the amount that we spend on programming. Now, the wild card in here, we know what our programming cost is gonna be, we know what our sale price is gonna be. The wild card is, how many customers are we gonna have? We currently have five-hundred-and-fifty-two video customers. I don't know if we're going to have five-hundred-and-fifty-two, if we're gonna have a hundred-and-fifty-two, or we're gonna have a thousand-and-fifty-two. So what I did on this budget is take the current number and took twenty percent off. That's about the experience that SMBS had a number of years ago when they converted. They initially lost a chunk of customers, and then some of them then drifted back to streaming. It became more relevant and more mainstream. So this is purely a best estimate based on the information we have. But at least we're into the black a bit on this now. The prior budget that you had saw was into the red quite a ways if we hadn't made that conversion to streaming video. So this is what we're looking at on this one. Water fund, again, this is pretty, pretty stable, the water fund. Revenue doesn't change much year to year unless we had some high-water users. But premium Iowa pork is just starting up, and so we'll see what their water use is gonna be. It's gonna be less than what High Life was, I believe. We also have Wyndham Wash, the truck wash, they use quite a bit of water. They use a lot of their own water, reclaimed water, but they used a lot from us too. But now with less truck traffic coming in and out, there's a little less use there commercially. We still have our agreement with Poet, and we have our agreement with Red Rock World Water, so we're contracted, and Bingham Lake, and so our contracted water doesn't change much as far as revenue. Expenses, again, we're looking at, you know, what our expenses were last year for good services, labor, those kind of things. And then had a little bit of inflation on those as prices go up for those kind of items. Our debt service, which is the water share of some past street projects. And then depreciation, and then we got a cash flow. Now, for two thousand twenty-six, the utility commission did put a rate increase that will be going into effect after the first of the year of two percent. And essentially, that was just to keep pace with inflation. Inflation's a little bit, CPI is a little bit higher than that number, but the fund is in a good position, so they went with two percent. Rather step it up a little bit each time than wait for five years and then have to do a really big jump. So that's kind of been their way they operate. Same on the wastewater fund. Again, we're looking at revenue here. The loss of High Life a couple of years ago really did hurt pretty bad there. We did get some state money to help reduce our debt on that, which was very helpful. But as far as what we're bringing in and taking out, as far as the revenue annually, you can kind of see the revenue is one-point-eight-eight million, and the expenses are one-point-nine, or one-point-nine-five-four. So it's basically just short of a break-even budget. Now, we do have some debt service payments that we're making out of the operational, but then we also have depreciation. So we will have a, again, in that one, again, two percent rate raise here. Electric, electric fund, again, depend a little bit on what happens at premium Iowa pork. But we've been pretty good with our power purchases. We had a couple of contracts earlier this year that we were able to assign to another community that was looking for those. That's gonna help us reduce some of our power purchase costs, which is some of our overhead. And so we have six-point-six million of revenue, five-point-six million in projected expenses, power purchases. Transmission, getting the power to Wyndham actually costs us more than the energy itself. So that's a complete reverse from the way it used to be twenty years ago. It was seventy, eighty, ninety percent power and ten, fifteen, twenty percent transmission. It's now, turn transmission has gotten very expensive. Then we have our transfer to the general fund, capital outlay, they've got a number of things. Transfer to debt service, because we did the generation building and new generators. There was some debt that was issued for that, so we gotta start paying that off. And then, of course, we have depreciation, and so in there, we will be showing a cash balance in that account. We're in the third year of a rate increase. That's five percent. That was put into place in two thousand twenty-four. We did a five-year rate study back in twenty-three, and they had recommended twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six for five percent to get us back to where we needed to be on a cash position due to all of the projects that we did. We still have very affordable electric prices compared to our peer communities. But, so that's where we're at with this one. Liquor fund, again, down to the liquor store, just short of two-point-five million dollars of revenue, two-point-two-six million of expense, the transfer to the general fund. And then, again, a little bit of debt service there because the renovation project, a little bit of capital outlay and depreciation, and they too, then will show a little bit of a cash balance at the end of the year. So we're in good shape there. The next category of expenses come into the general fund. And the general fund, these are typically all the activities that we undertake that aren't revenue-producing. They may produce a little bit, but nowhere near self-sustaining. You know, parks, yeah, we get some rec fees, you know, from people renting a shelter or rec programming, kids in baseball, those kind of things. But we don't get a lot of dollars coming in for some of these other things, planning and zoning. They have some building permit revenue, a lot of that goes to the state. So these are all general fund activities. And our general fund budget for the year, we're at three-point-five million. That's up from three-point-four-five million last year. It's a one-point-three percent increase in the general fund, which is under the rate of inflation. So those funds kept pretty tight as you went through the, all those on your budget workshops and asked them to cut corners where they could. Everybody has. And so we're happy to report that we're under the rate of inflation for the general fund this year. General fund capital, again, council went through and picked a number of things there. We got some computer upgrades. You started a city hall building fund, because we're talking about the building, that the roof of the building that we're in, the foundation of the building that we're in, may need some repair or what we're gonna do with the new, or with the old fire hall over there. So you started a building fund there. We've got some server maintenance in our city website, the refresh, that's underway, we're working on that. Some dollars in parks, one of the key ones in parks, the council's putting another seventy thousand towards Castle Kingdom. There was a hundred and hundred thousand dollars in that fund. You're adding another seventy to it. So that's moving in the direction to hopefully get something funded there in the near future. Then last year, we did a police trailer. We were over budget by a little bit, so we had a little bit of wiggle in this. So we added that five-hundred-twenty-nine dollars just to balance that account out. I had missed when we had our meeting, the police department had been, had asked for a pepperball rifle for at least lethal, lethal, there I get it, enforcement. And so, again, so I put, added that back in. As I mentioned, we had a little bit of wiggle because we had our health insurance budgeted as our status quo from our former provider, the department heads. Got together and we switched providers for the department heads and the law enforcement folks to the public employer insurance plan, and that was a little cheaper than the one we were in. So that saved us a little money. So with that little bit of savings, we're able to fund a couple of these other things that were, that needed to be cleaned up. And then we had street equipment fund, snowgo replacement for our camera operator over there. For two-hundred-and-twenty thousand, that's been on this list for quite some time. Tractor that's shared between streets and the arena. Then a little bit of dollars towards a storm sewer project over in Red Leaf Court. You had the public hearing on that a month or two ago. And there was some ask that, you know, city should kick some dollars into it, so you budgeted some dollars to kick into that. And then the last one on the list is that cul-de-sac, we had talked about that with Mendat quite some time, for the cul-de-sac that was gonna go in between Dollar General and the car wash. We spent a enormous amount of money engineering that. That did not materialize because Mendat did not build the turn lane there. And so we had those lost costs, and we need to even that budget out. So we, we did that adhere to. The third category of funds are our special revenue funds. And these are funds that are, you know, quasi-business-like. They do operate as partial business. They bring in revenue. All of them are not self-supporting except for the ambulance. The ambulance is self-supporting. But like the library, the airport, pool, arena, EDA and the community center, they operate, they rent out rooms or they're renting out skating time or airplane hangar rent, those types of things. But they're not self-supporting, and so they're supported with tax dollars, and that's what's shown on this slide. The one thing on the pool that is noteworthy, we typically have about a hundred thousand dollars of tax levy support for the pool. But because the pool is not operational, those dollars were taken out, those operation dollars were taken out of this budget. What's in there for the pool is basically a portion of our rec director's time that we still have him. So we're keeping that fund alive, but there's nothing in there other than the personnel costs that were related to that. And for capital, for the special revenue funds, we've got a little bit of capital. It shows a hundred and, hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand, one hundred dollars. That's comprised of, we've got an airport crosswind runway, we had some design work in there. And there's gonna be some taxiway improvements there. It's about a half a million dollar project. Our match is a hundred and, or is twelve thousand, five hundred dollars. So we're getting a lot of bang for our buck on that. The arena is looking at a new Zamboni. The old one is, is quite old. We spent a lot of money on maintenance the last couple of years on that. And our rec director is working with Hockey Association on kind of a neat little deal there. What their thought is, or what their intention is, is to, the city purchases the Zamboni. Then the Hockey Association is going to sell advertising on that Zamboni, put those monies into a kitty. And then after ten years, they'll have enough money in the kitty to provide to the city along with the trade-in of the old Zamboni, then to fund a new one. So then you'd get a new one after ten years, and half of it would be paid for through those advertising revenues, and the other half would be paid for through the trade-in of the, of the existing unit. So kind of a good way to keep that piece current. And then revolving loan funds, we had some recapitalization. We have facade improvement program, which is popular with our smaller businesses. We have some commercial rehab loans that go out for life safety things in small, in businesses in town. Those funds were starting to run down because it's a third equity that the business owner puts in. It's a third payback loan, and then one-third is forgiven over time. As that portion that's forgiven gets, you know, doesn't get repaid, then that amount, total amount goes down over time, and so we're looking at recapitalizing some of that. And so fourteen thousand, five hundred's put in there and on the computer for EDA and library. So, which brings us to our debt service fund. We've got a fund for debt service. These are for general type of projects, not for your enterprise projects like water, sewer, electric. These are for, you can see, the emergency services facility, the arena, and three street projects that we've got outstanding currently. Our debt service account here last year was five-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand, this year it's five-hundred-and-two. We had a street project, one of the older ones was repaid, so that came off the list. But we do have the Island Park berm, and we do have the two thousand twenty-five alley project to pay for yet. So we will be adding some debt service back in here. And then potentially with the two thousand twenty-six street project, if you decide to move forward with First Avenue, that would then add some debt service in here for the following, following future years. But this where we're at right now. And then we also have a budget for miscellaneous projects. These are typically like our TIFs, our Small Cities Development Program or Dilapidated Housing Program. They're all kind of in one fund, one bucket. In total, we're getting about seven-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand of revenue and expect about six-hundred-and-twenty-one thousand of expense. So we'll have a little bit of a positive balance in there. As it's noted at the end of this, last meeting, I believe, you decertified three TIF districts, and EDA Director Ms. Wilt told you that those dollars were then gonna go back to the taxing jurisdiction. So those dollars that are in surplus do get returned for redistribution. And so that's what would happen with dollars that are left in this fund long-term. Sales tax savings estimate, as I noted here, in two thousand thirteen, the legislature exempted from the cities, the cities from paying sales tax on a lot of goods and services. And we're required to estimate what our tax savings, sales tax savings is annually. And so that number this year is fifty-six thousand dollars. But there are business activities like liquor store, telecom, electric that are not tax exempt, because those are typically done with private enterprises statewide. So the sales tax does not extend to those municipal type of utilities. And so the budget summary, we've got our proposed levy, two million, seven-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand, five hundred and twenty-one dollars. That is a three-point-nine-nine percent increase. The preliminary levy, as you may recall, was four-point-nine, and so you cut about a, not quite a percent out of that when you went through these budgets in the workshop. Of that proposed levy, five-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars will support the general fund operations. Five-hundred-and-thirteen thousand, four hundred and eighteen are going into the capital purchases. Those are the things like the snowgo and some of those things. Special revenue funds, those, that's operational support for like the arena, community center, library, EDA, et cetera. The hundred-and-twenty-eight special revenue fund capital of that one, twenty-eight, ninety-eight thousand of it, that is the Zamboni. So, and then there's debt service for the debt service levy and then tax abatement, because we do have some properties, the residential properties that we do tax abatements on for a five-year period. Those folks get charged tax and it gets rebated, so we have to account for that in the, in our budget. So you can see where our, our numbers are here. And then a little bit of just history back from two thousand eleven, so we got about a fifteen-year run here. This is what the city's property tax levies have gone up for the last fifteen years. You can see our average over that period is three-point-six-eight percent. We had a low of zero in eleven, thirteen, and fourteen, and we had a high of seven-point-six-seven, in two thousand twenty-three. So you can see there what are, kind of, we go up and down a little bit and up and down a little bit. So, but we averaged three-point-six-eight, which is really, you know, a pretty decent amount. Talking about preliminary levies, ours was four-point-nine percent. I've got that highlighted at the bottom of the screen. The comparison communities around here were identified by Flaherty and Hood back in two thousand seventeen as comparable communities. Final property tax levies aren't set yet, but the data is out for preliminaries. And so if you look at some of the peer communities on there, Jackson has a twenty-five percent increase in their preliminary levy. They were the, by far, the, the highest. And Glencoe, I believe, is the lowest at four-point-two, and we were the second lowest city at four-point-nine. Those fourteen cities, like thirteen or fourteen cities on this average, eight-point-nine-eight percent. So our initial levy was about half of what our pure cities were doing. And then just a little property tax comparison, these are two thousand twenty, kind of small. These are two thousand twenty-four numbers. That's the most recent information the state had. Our, you can see our, our tax rates in black at the bottom. We were at five-seven-four-seven. And the average of all those communities is six-two, six-one. So we're, we're under the average for those same peer communities, and we're right, just a little bit shy of the average. So we're kind of right in the middle of the So we're kind of right in the middle of the pack for our comparison communities. And then one of the more important ones, your general fund balance. So these, these are the funds that we've got in essentially in savings for unexpected or unforeseen projects or things that come up. Like in 2024, we had the flood and we spent, you know, half a million dollars before we got reimbursed from the feds for some of that. So we need to have this kind of a rainy day fund. You can see our history there. This year we've, we've got just a little over five or 2.5 million. According to our audited numbers from last year, that's, will equal about 56% of what our general fund operating expenses are. And the council's policy is to maintain 35 to 60%. So you can see we're in our range and right towards the upper end of that. So, which is good, gives us a little flexibility on things. And that's the end of my rather lengthy and detailed presentation. So I'll take questions or Donna will take questions. Maybe, do you have anything to add, Donna? Okay. Thank you.
Does any council have questions on anything?
I guess my only comment is, you know, when we, and I think the reason why we probably don't have a lot of comments or questions is just so the public knows. We go through many of meetings and sessions going through each department, each line item, their requests, you know, the, it's pretty detailed, long nights that we spend going over this. And so when we come to this meeting where we finally have had all the figures and everything put together, we've been through this a few different times. But I think overall, you know, when we were looking, we were looking at trying to fund the things that we needed to fund within the community. And we're hearing, you know, streets were the top priority. So I think we did put the focus there on, on street projects. And then tried to stay as light on everything else as we could by looking at how we had that 4.9 preliminary levy. And we got that down to 3.99. So I think we felt pretty happy about that, that we were able to decrease that and didn't stay at the 4.9. And I think that's just, you know, all of us putting our heads together to see how we could try to save with each department a little bit here and there to make that levy come down a little bit. So I know nobody wants to have any kind of increase and it's, it's always difficult because you don't know where that money's going to come from to help with that. But overall, everything in the world, prices are going up and it's, it's difficult to maintain and operate an entire city with all the different departments we have. So I guess I'm happy, satisfied with the 3.99 that we were able to do. And just thank the hard work of all the department heads and the different staff that put all this information together and presented to us over all the different long nights of meeting and trying to figure out what the priorities were, where to spend the money and where we can save money to come up with this in the end.
And I want you to know that each department head, as they came up, I looked at them all and said, I would like to see between zero and 10% savings in any costs that we could cut corners somewhere. And I'm real proud of all of them because they all did, they did their best with what they had. Some departments didn't get what they wanted. Some departments, like Jenny said, we had to fund some areas, but we cut back on a lot just to try to keep it down. Because we all know money's not, money's tight everywhere and I wish we could fund everything, but we can't. We only got so many dollars in the kitty and I'm, I'm, I'm feeling comfortable with what we did out there. I'm hoping you guys are too, but I thank you for your understanding.
I just want to say that I appreciate seeing where we've fallen with our peer cities. Because I think that's just important to see that we aren't at a 25% where, I mean, and the average is 3.68. So I think we're sitting pretty good with it. And we did, it was a lot of discussion and three different budget meetings for hours and hours and we hear from everybody. So I think council made some good decisions and happy to see it all put together. Nice presentation. Thank you guys for your work in that.
Thanks to Donna Torkelson for all of her work on crunching all the numbers and redoing it and redrafting it and fixing little tweaks and errors along the way. So thank you for all of your work, Donna.
I, I was pleased when I looked at my property tax statement that I got a week or 10 days ago in the mail. I think my property taxes ended up going down 5.4% for the next year. So the, the city and the school went down and the county went up for me. But, but I think, I think the city was down over 6% for me.
Do you have anything, Donna?
I don't. Thank you though. Thanks. It's always a pleasure working with you guys and I thought the meetings went really well this year and yeah.
So now after the budget presentation, we will open this up for public input. So do we invite them to this table? Do we need to pull the podium over? Okay, if you would like to speak, state their name. State your name. You can come have a seat at this chair. Just, there's a button you can push on the mic. When the light turns red, then it's on and you're welcome to speak. Would anyone like to speak during the public input? Any members of the public like to speak for the public input at the 2026 budget presentation? Final time, would anyone like to speak? Yep, come on up. Welcome.
Okay, Tammy Glidden, well, I'm glad your taxes went down because mine went up a lot. And a lot for the city of Wyndham. Any explanation why he got lucky and some of us didn't?
Did your valuation change? I mean, that's the, you know, the big thing. If the county assessor had changed your valuation from one year to the next?
The city, the school. I checked all three, all three. Yes, the value went up, the city went up.
Yep, if the valuation goes up, then the, then the tax amount would go up. That is, that is correct. So apparently Mr. Espilson's valuation went down, which then lowered that tax. If you have a question on the valuation, that's with the county assessor's office and the time to appeal.
So the value of my house also affects the taxes of Wyndham?
Absolutely. Yes, yep. Yep, the higher the value, the, the more the, because it's, it's based on a percentage. So look, just for discussion sake, if your house is a hundred thousand dollars and the tax rate was 1%, you'd pay a thousand dollars in tax, which is 1% of a hundred thousand. But if your house went down in value to 80,000, that 1% would then be $800 of tax. So your tax will go down. But if the value went to 120, you'd pay $1,200, then your taxes go up because the taxes are just a percentage of what that value is. So that, that's how that works out. So if you have a question on your valuation, county assessor would be the one. And then the appeals for the valuation is in May here with this council.
I want you to that meeting too. Okay.
Yep, very good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Vera Armenteros, your explanation makes sense to me, but we just came from the county. And they basically said that the rise in your valuation hardly has any. It's only a small part of why your taxes would increase.
Yeah, right. I mean, the, the city's tax rate is going up 3.99%. The county's is going up, whatever the county's going up, the city's going up, or the school district's going up, but the school is up. Right, but they work together. So at the end of the day, like I said, just the rate is a percentage of the value. So in some cases, the value might be going up and the rate is going up. If your value did, if your value didn't change at all, the city's tax rate would go up 3.99. So if you paid a hundred dollars in city tax last year with no change in valuation, you'd pay 104 this year. So it would be all.
Your explanation made sense.
Yes, it'd be all related to that.
Had a little different take on it at the county.
Sure, yep, but yeah, it is, it is tied to valuation. Yep, no, no, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else want to speak during the public input for the 2026 budget presentation? Anybody? Last call. Do I need to say that two more times? Okay. All right. Are, do we approve?
Next, your next process then, at your next meeting, you'll get the final budget. And then you would vote on the final budget and set the final levy amount. And then once that levy number, which is the two million, seven hundred and eighty-nine thousand, five hundred and twenty-one dollars, if you approve the budget, that's the number that will go to the county. And then the county auditor will put that into the final tax statements and that will be done for the next payable.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have got a resolution accepting a donation for the library. And I just gotta get to this here.
I'll introduce the resolution of the donation to the library.
Wonderful.
I'll second it.
The resolution has been introduced by Esplin, second by Benson. And this is a resolution to accept a donation from the Friends of the Library for the Wyndham Public Library in the amount of $314.17. And the donor requests that the donation be used for the purchase of STEM activity materials. Is there any discussion on this? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call.
Sherman.
Yes.
Esplin.
Yes.
Benson.
Yes.
Quade.
Yes.
Nelson.
All right, that resolution has been introduced. Thank you to the Friends of the Library for the donation to the Wyndham Public Library. They are very frequent donors and that is wonderful. Next up, city code, land use discussion, data centers.
Okay, Jason pointed at me, so I'll, I'll take a stab with this.
Thank you.
So, so as you know, a couple of years or years so ago, we had a data center that wanted to come to the community. There was some law discussion on whether it was good for the community, power cost, location, noise, things like that. There is nothing in city code that addresses data centers, yay, nay, conditions, nothing. And so we do get inquiries from private businesses, from our transmission provider, energy providers, whether or not a data center could be located in the community. And staff, myself, Jason, we just do not have answers to give them because we don't know what the council's thought is on it or what to tell them as far as where they could look in the community if it were to come to the community as far as zoning. And so a couple of meetings ago, Jason Tocora, our electric superintendent and myself talked to the mayor and kind of said, where do we, where would we start with having this discussion? And so the thought was that maybe for the council to request the planning commission just to review land use. So whether or not they could look at, you know, what zones may or may not be appropriate and then what conditions may or may not be appropriate and then report that back to you. If they come back and say, nope, we don't think they should fit in the city for these reasons. Okay, then you've got that recommendation, you can take it or send it back to them for additional work. Or if they come and say, yeah, we think they could go in these zones with these conditions, then you can accept that and develop code along those lines. Or you could say, nope, we don't want to have that, that's fine. But then the decision is made by you guys as decision-making bodies. And then we would have direction on how, what to tell people when they come and ask us. Because right now we just don't have an answer. And so we're asking council essentially to kick this over to the planning commission to have them start a discussion on the topic and then return it back to you at a future point in time with their recommendation. So that's all we're asking for you guys at this point. And Jason, I hear to answer questions if you have any.
Does anyone have any questions on this?
I just, I mean, it makes a lot of sense that we would have the planning commission look into this and develop things. We've, you know, had issues before and a lot of discussion on when we had a data, or it was more data mining, wasn't it? Before, so I think this is a good idea. Let's get out ahead of it and have something kind of figured out and see what they recommend to us. Because that is the, I guess, first department to go to is the planning to figure out what they think for what could fit and where within our city. And then we can, after that, look to talk to Jason about electrical. And I mean, I think before he kind of talked like that was, we had enough electrical to be able to do a lot of things. But I think first we start with land use and see what they bring back to us first before we, and then go to electrical next.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments on this? So are you looking for?
Just a, a motion to refer this then to the planning commission.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to refer to the planning commission for the discussion of the data center. Say code.
I'll second.
So you have a motion by Benson, second by Quade, to refer the land use discussion for data centers to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Correct? Is that worded right? Okay, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, contractor payments, 2025 Alley Project, change order number one and 2025 Alley Project Pay Request Number Three for $148,507.13.
Good evening. Yes, you pretty much hit the nail on the head. Thank you. So yes, the change order was for some foundation that they found by the E Free Church. So they had to tear the foundation out of an old building that was buried in there. That was pretty much right at the surface, right underneath the asphalt. So we had to tear that out to get the slope for the ADA compliant sidewalks and everything else to get everything to match up. So that's where the change order came in.
So we need a motion to approve that? Or are you just letting us?
Yep, it would be a motion to approve change order number one in the amount of $4,617.
I make a motion to approve the change order number one for set amount. I'll second that one.
Motion is made by Benson, second by Sherman. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay. The contractor payment, please. So the total bill was 1,400, one, 148,507.13.
I'll make a motion to approve Pay Request Number Three for 148,507.13. I'll second it.
Motion has been made by Esplin, second by Benson. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And there will be one more, correct? The final will come. Because they've pretty much been through the project, they've done the walkthrough, yet maybe some punchless stuff.
Yeah, they need to finish up some punchless stuff and everything for some of the storm drains and everything for the runoff of the roofs. There's a couple people that are complaining about, they like a little bit different situation. So been in contact with DGR and they're going to get a hold of Crystal and get all that kind of straightened out, so.
All right, thank you, John. Next up is also use, street closure request, Wyndham Chamber, December 11th for a winter parade. winter parade.
The Chamber has requested that the city close Third Avenue from Twelfth Street to Ninth Street, and Ninth Street between Third and Fourth Avenue for the winter parade on December eleventh from six to seven. The parade lineup will start at our Savior's Church at six, and end at Fourth Avenue and Ninth Street intersection at seven. The police chief and I both agree that it should work out pretty good, like it did last year. The Chamber will be hosting the parade, the Chamber roughly has eight units, she thought, so Santa will be at First Paloro on Tenth Street, Toro will have Hot Cocoa there, and there'll be Christmas at Candlelight around the square, we'll bring barricades up and block everything off.
Make a motion to accept the street closure request for Wyndham Chamber on December eleventh.
I'll second that motion.
Motion has been made by Benson, second by Sherman, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, guys, have a good night.
Thank you, John. Next up, new business, does anyone have any new business? No new business. Old business, does anyone have old business? It's a big no, all right. Council comments, would anyone like to start? Mr. Benson?
I have no problem talking, but, um, I just want to touch on base on the whole internet TV changeover and getting streaming going and stuff like that. I want to put a request out there, when you guys, people come down to the city hall to have their bill changed, to do whatever they're going to do, please don't take it out on the people standing behind the counters, they're not the ones at fault here, they're just the ones that are accepting it, which you guys are bringing to them, they're getting name called, and angry people, I understand, it's, it's difficult for everybody, but it, it shouldn't, they're still Wyndham people, they're, they're people that, just like you and I, doing their job, and they're told to do a job a certain way and get it done right, they're there to help you the best they can, they have very little knowledge of streaming, and, but they do what they can and tell you what they know. So I'm asking, if you, if you do come down and you're a little upset, don't take it out on them, because it's not really their fault. If you got to call somebody you want, call somebody screaming, go ahead and call me, I guess, but, but don't, don't take it out on them, they have, they have very little resources to do with what they do, and they're trying their best, and that's, I guess, all I can ask, and just try to be good neighbors and good sports about everything, and it's what we do here in Wyndham, and that's how we take care of ourselves, and they're Wyndhamite people, too, so, and they have feelings, at the end of the day, they go home drained, I mean, they're doing the best they can, so just, what, all the department has do their best, and all the employees of Wyndham do their best, so just, just cut them some slack, if you would, please, thank you.
I just, again, to remind people about the design day that is going to be at the Bark on December tenth, our Park and Rec Board, most of the members plan on being there that night as well, on hand helping out and taking questions and answering and, and those kind of things that evening. You know, we're really hoping to get people's input for the new design of Castle Kingdom, and as a lot of people that were in the community years ago know, that the playground by Leathers was the same company that came back then, and they came to the schools and went in and talked with the kids, and got their ideas and their drawings and their, you know, visions of what the park would look like, and then had a community meeting where they showed all the pictures that the kids made, and took questions, comments, and those kind of things. So it's kind of like come full circle, that now they're coming back again and doing the same process, and there's a lot of adults that we've talked to that remember being in middle, in elementary school, and them coming and designing, and, so they're kind of excited to come and see this, and see what now the next generation of kids are going to come up with for ideas. So it should be a fun night to bring families out and, you know, talk about what the future of Castle Kingdom may look like, and where we go from here. I know the Park and Rec Board is really hoping that, you know, we can get some kind of park back there and soon, that has been a goal of the Park and Rec Board, so we'd like to see people come out that night and give their input. Then my other thing would be, just remember to try to encourage people to shop local and support your local vendors, I know we have a lot of vendor fairs and craft events coming up in the next few weekends, I know there's one at Bark, and there's one at the Community Center, and a lot of local people come and sell the local handmade crafts and things that they make, so really try to get out and support our local people that make things and sell in our communities, they make wonderful gifts for people.
I just am so thankful for so much, and we all have something to be thankful for, and I just want to remind people that there's always, there's always a lot to be thankful for. One quick little thing, I don't normally do this, but my daughter was involved in the crash yesterday, and it made me think a little more deeply, right? When we come close to stuff like that, my daughter's okay, but I'm thankful, so very thankful, for all of you, for this community, for so many things in life, and I just want to encourage you to, to count your blessings, too. That's it, thanks.
So glad your daughter's okay, I'm thankful for that as well, I'm glad you reminded us all of that. I do just want to remind people, I know Mr. Dana talked about Demo Day for the new streaming, so I just want to remind people of that, it's at the Community Center tomorrow at six PM, they'll do a how-to, and I actually went and helped someone set up their streaming, and I am not techie, and I had to set up the Roku account, and, I mean, it took a hot minute, but it wasn't frustrating, and we got it, and everything has been working great, so I think people have some anxiety about this, but it's really pretty painless, and I, if you have a neighbor or someone that may not be getting information on the internet, like we talked about, if you could share anything with them about coming to this or calling for assistance, that would be great, I'm worried about ninety-year-old Aunt Tilly that is unaware, so I hope that we can just reach everyone. And again, a touch on Design Day, just thank you to everyone involved in that, Park and Rec, EDA, Friends of Wyndham Parks, there's just been some super active people in that, and I'm glad that has come together, and it seems very quick, that all of a sudden, it's next Wednesday, December tenth, from five thirty to eight, but I think part of the reason for that is we need plans for grant deadlines, am I correct? So it just had to, had to happen quick, there's so much going on next week, but we hope you'll join us at the Bark in the gym from five thirty to eight, Leathers will do a short presentation at six PM, there will be refreshments and kids' activities, and opportunities to get involved, like sign up with the bill, to get some Christmas ornaments, or help us fundraise for the parks, so, or help the group, help Friends of Wyndham Parks fundraise, so we hope to see you all there, and I think that's all I have, if no one has anything else, then we'll adjourn the meeting by unanimous cons, I'm sorry, Steve, did you have anything? I'm so sorry. Okay, we'll adjourn the meeting by unanimous consent.